Call a meeting to order. I'd just like to begin by letting everybody know that council dot com, why send your rets? You won't be able to make the meeting. Can I have a mover and a seconder to open the meeting? Councilor Loftus, Councilor Deschamps?
Moved by Councilor Loftus and seconded by Councilor Deschamps. Be it resolved, the council for the incorporation of the municipality of St. Charles hereby opens a special meeting of council at 5:30 PM on January 14, 2025.
All those in favor? Carry. We would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Robinson-Uran Treaty territory, and the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Ettega-Mixting Anishnabe. We also wish to recognize our neighboring community of Dope East Pers nation. While we meet today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge the importance of the land we each call home. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility in improving relationships between nations and to improving our own understanding of local indigenous people and their culture. Can I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? Councilor Loftus and Councilor Poty.
Moved by Councilor Loftus and seconded by Councilor Poty. Be it resolved, that the agenda for the special meeting of council till January 14, 2025 be adopted and presented.
All those in favor? Carry. Disclosure of peculiar interest, Councilor Loftus?
None, Your Sheriff.
Councilor Poty?
None, Your Sheriff.
Councilor Deschamps?
None, Your Sheriff.
And not for myself. This evening, there is a public hearing scheduled for three zoning bylaw amendments. Application number ZVA 24-23 SC Ryan McBain, application number ZVA 24-24 SC Ryan McBain, application number ZVA 24-25 SC Jessica Kemp and Francis Jacob. The Planning Act requires that a public hearing be held before council decides whether or not to pass a zoning bylaw amendment. The public hearing serves two purposes. First, to present to council and the public the details and background to a proposed zoning rezoning. And second, to receive comments from public and agencies before a council decision is made. Monsieur Demont will provide a summary of the application. From there, the application will be requested to make a presentation, followed by questions from public either in favor or against the proposal. Council will then have the opportunity to question the applicant, the director of planning, or anyone giving a presentation. The zoning bylaw amendment will then be considered by council later on this evening. Monsieur Demont, would you please advise how public notice was provided?
Thank you. So notice of public hearing was posted in the municipal office and was sent by mail to the assessed owners within the municipality of St. Charles subject to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment applications. And to those persons and agencies likely to have an interest in the application tonight. The notice was sent on December 20th, 2024, being over 20 days prior to this evening's meeting. Included with the notice was an explanation of the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application, and a key map showing the location of the subject property.
Thank you. I now declare this portion of the hearing to be a public hearing to deal with application number ZVA 24-23 SC and ZVA 24-24 SC Ryan McBain. Monsieur Demont, will you please summarize the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and provide any additional information and correspondence relevant to this application?
Thank you. So if it's okay with council this evening, there are two separate applications, but if it's okay, I'll summarize both of them and I'll provide some descriptions on each because they back onto each other, but technically their legal description is different, so the intent remains the same. So I just wanted to kind of, before I get jumped into the summary of the application, do it all in one if it's okay with council tonight.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, so we have two applications tonight, both received by Ryan McBain, who's here this evening as the owner of the property. So the lands are described legally as part of Lot 12, Concession 1, in the township of Dunhill, in the municipality of St. Charles. And it's Lot 16, which is its own property, and then Lot 17 is a separate property. So you have Lot 16, Lot 17. They both form part of a plan of subdivision, which is 53M 1140. So that's why we have two separate properties, two separate vote numbers as part of this plan subdivision. So I'll touch on both applications this evening. So in terms of 23 St. Charles, so the intent of the description this evening is the subject property is presently zoned rural under the zoning bylaw of the municipality of St. Charles. The site is to be rezoned from rural to special residential 1. And the whole intent of this zoning tonight and that special provision is to permit a semi-detached dwelling unit and to regulate a minimum lot area without municipal sewer services. And I kind of touch on why, because the lot area requirement is 0.4 hectares. So the lot currently the way it is today is 0.156 hectares in lot area with a lot frontage of 36.57 meters and is presently vacant. I do understand there's construction taking place, so at the time of how it's being assessed, it's assessed as vacant land, so I just wanted to kind of provide that information to you as well. And the site is located at the corner of King Street East and Emily Street. Now pertaining to the other application, which is 24 St. Charles. Again, similar characteristics, the subject property is presently zoned rural under the municipality zoning bylaw. The site is to be rezoned from rural to special residential 1 to permit a semi-detached dwelling unit and to regulate a minimum lot area without municipal sewer services. Again, the requirement under the bylaw is 0.4 hectares for minimum requirements. The lot is currently 0.156 in lot area and has a frontage of 35.28 meters and is also assessed vacantly through impact. And the site is located at the corner of Parkview Avenue and Emily Street. And I'll give you a little bit of context, obviously, there's a lot of history here on these plans, but I'll just summarize it briefly. So it dates back to 1977. The subdivision originally received draft plan approval in 1977. When it says draft plan, it wasn't finalized, there was conditions. When you satisfy all your conditions, there might be 34 conditions. Once all those conditions are cleared, then it becomes final. So that never, you know, the history and the context, it was always a draft plan. It never formalized to be final. So the original subdivision agreement dated October 7th of 1981. According to a legal opinion, I did get a legal opinion on this as well, it's no longer registered on title. Subsequently, the municipality of St. Charles has adopted a recent bylaw, bylaw 2024-01, to enter a site access and construction agreement for the development within King Street East subdivision. And that's that plan that I referred to as part of this legal description, which is 53M 1140. And it was approved for registration back in 1982, however, not on title. So that's kind of the context as to where we are today. There is a site access and construction agreement in process of last year. So in terms of the official plan, so when we look at the development and we look at these types of proposals, we want to ensure that the proposals in conformity of a provincial policy statement 2024, which is October 20th of this past year, but recently was approved by the minister. And then secondly, we look at conformity in terms of our local policies. The official plan specifically as a high-level document that kind of facilitates what can happen in certain areas. So in terms of the official plan, first priority, when you look at development, it's community residential lands. In this particular case, we're in the village of St. Charles, so it's a high priority. It's a second priority in terms of priorities. So you have the village residential and then municipality of St. Charles. And within these village residential designation, the predominant use of land will be a variety of dwelling types, residential dwelling types, such as what we're dealing with tonight, semi-detached, single-family homes, duplex. That's what you predominantly want to see under this designation umbrella. So that conforms in that sense. It also talks about new development in the village policy area. Development will occur through infill, intensification, redevelopment of the built-up area. New development occurring on lands that are vacant, which are technically may be available for development in this area. So that's exactly what's, we have a built-up area, there are homes taking place or currently under new construction, and we have adjacent homes that have been there along King Street. So again, all the policy frameworks support that. And then we did get some servicing documentation from the public health unit on October 28, 2024. Sub district health unit provided approvals for the two-bedroom unit with the two full bathrooms and a second two-bedroom unit with two full bathrooms. So there was supportability from our private septic system going through this process. And in terms of conformity, now we look at the provincial, we look at the official plan, now we look at the zoning. In terms of zoning, the lands, both Lots 16 and 17, were zoned rural, which is why we're here this evening, to have that changed to residential 1. As part of that due diligence at my end, when I'm looking at the residential 1, what's unique with the zoning bylaw for the municipality of St. Charles under residential 1, they give you certain provisions. So they give you provisions for a lot area, a lot frontage. And the lot area basically says, if you have municipal services, this is what the lot area is. If you don't have municipal services, this is what the lot area is under residential. So it gives you two options. So in this particular case, we're aware of, as part of the site access and service agreement, that it's going to be privately. So as soon as when you go privately, you need a larger lot area. But these lots have been established as part of the subdivision that dates back into the 70s, the 1970s. So it's a lot of record legally. And so technically going through this process, I still have to acknowledge through a bylaw that even though it's going through privately and doesn't meet the 0.4 hectares, the bylaw will recognize that the 0.156 is acceptable and because they also have approvals from the sub district health unit in terms of that aspect. So that's the whole purpose of having the bylaws, not only rezoning from rural to residential 1, to also have a regulation just to technically recognize the deficiency in lot area with the current standard that's required under the city's bylaw. So that's for both lots, that's for Lot 16 and Lot 17, which is reflected in application 23 and application 24 tonight. So that's kind of noted. And in terms of lot frontage, there's no issue because the lot frontage minimum is 30 meters. Both the lots exceed the 30-meter threshold and is part of the agreement as well. So we moved on to agency comments. We circulated both applications to staff, the municipality, and anybody else that would have an interest, provincial like agencies. So with that said, for both of them, they're consistent. Both the comments for 23 and 24 are consistent from staff. So C A O, clerk, chief building, official, public work superintendent, fire department of the municipality of St. Charles had no concerns with the proposal for both applications. So actually, I kind of just summarized it in one shot. I did touch on the sub district health unit, October 28, 2024. They provided support approvals of the subject system. So with that said, in terms of context of everything, the application is consistent with our 2024 provincial planning statement, conforms with the official plan for the sub east planning area, and also conforms to the zoning bylaw for the municipality of St. Charles, and therefore can be supported from a planning perspective.
Thank you very much, Monsieur Demont. At this point now, are there any questions, comments from the members of the public? If so, please stand, give your name and full mailing address, and follow with your question or comment. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? The director, to the director of planning or anybody having made a presentation? Okay. Councilor Loftus, any questions?
So basically, this new subdivision, Matthew, are they going to be all changed to residential 1? Like from rural to residential 1, is this the projection for this subdivision? I'm just trying to...
Through you, Chair. In terms of that question, that's the projection, that is kind of the guidance going first. And there's a little bit of history too. In 2011, in 2011, a large chunk of, again, there's different owners through all these lots. There's, you know, the semi-lots of this old subdivision plan, give or take. And a certain portion of those lots in 2011 were owned by a certain individual, and that individual at the time rezoned a portion, because they were all rural at the time. It rezoned it to residential 1. So when you look at the map, you're saying to yourself, well, why is, you know, why is a certain portion just residential 1 and some other lots are just rural in the back half of rural? It's because 2011 kind of really started, where one owner did that. And then we have another owner this evening for these applications, and there's other ownership in the back half of the lots that will have to kind of go through similar processes. And those processes may change depending on the type of, of your projections. Like maybe it's townhomes, maybe it's semi, like maybe it's more than two units. So it's hard to say, but it's in the residential direction, I think, in that way.
Any more questions? No. Councilor Poty?
My only question really was why they would have been zoned rural to begin with? Because once they were turned into a subdivision, I would assume they would have been kind of rezoned at that point, but maybe it was just legacy stuff kind of following along?
Through you, Chair, it's a good point. It's hard to say what the past was, but I can stick to the fact that it was a draft plan. So when you see draft plan, it means that those conditions weren't fulfilled. So it could have been hypothetically that they had to rezon those lands, but they never actually did rezon them. And they just let it lapse over time.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Deschamps?
And the only question is going forward, mentioned there are going to be other lots that are going to be going through the same thing, the same zoning issue, not a collect issue, but we will have to be changing the zoning on more properties. Here is going to be something that's going to be a little easier, a little quicker next time, like more streamlined? Like now that you went through the process this time, like? Or is it going to be, every case is going to be start from scratch?
Through you, Chair, I appreciate the comment. In terms of streamlining, it's no different than any other rate pair in the area. It's always efficient in terms of responding, communicating through email or phone calls. So I'd, in terms of streamlining timelines and that, there's no change from Nancy and I's perspective for applications. Everybody will have to do the same process.
But you want us to reach out for like legal opinion again or nothing like that? Because they're all similar or that's more what I meant?
Oh, yeah, no.
Extra, over and above?
So to give you a little bit of context, the legal opinion wasn't for this application. I just touched on that, so let me maybe just explain myself a little bit. This dates back, like, you know, I've been here now nine years, so it's probably at the early stages, maybe six or seven years ago, where there's people inquiring about the lands, and you had past council and past other people in different positions, and nobody knew anything. So they just said, hey, Matt, can you kind of just like dig into it, gather all the information, take a little bit of context? And then fast forward to where we are now. Staff, Tammy, Dennis, myself, years ago, had internal conversations to see what options would be the best options, knowing the context of what was established. And there's two options. One was create a new slate, or the other option was what council you guys have put forth last term, which was the construction agreement. And so that's what's kind of been facilitated. So now going forward, there's different ownerships. So that construction agreement speaks to a certain extent of the lands right now that are being developed, as we all see. So that will go back, I'm assuming that will go back to council for like the next phase of construction, whatever that looks like, for another agreement like with the other owner. And then from there, they would just facilitate with our office, which we are having conversations with, it's just determining the status of like what type of residential development do they want? Because to your point, these were all single lots that were created. They're all, they're exactly like, characteristically, they're exactly, so I agree with you. They're all the 0.156 majority of them. And so now, if people want to say, hey, if we don't want to do a single-family home, if you don't want to do semi, we might want to do like say a triplex or a fourplex, a little more dense. Well, that might have some implications or the process might be different to make amendments to the old plans to where you need to be from a servicing perspective as an example. So that's hard to say, unless they come back and say, hey, you know what? We just want to move forward with single-family homes and semis, then it's same process, same process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Monsieur Demont. If there are no further questions, then I declare this public hearing to be concluded. It is now in order for the council members to make a motion to council considering this application. We will be looking at the bylaws at the end. We're going to go through both applications. So at the end of the, after both presentations, then we look at the bylaws. All right. Now we move on to the second, or actually third, application. I now declare this portion of the hearing to be a public hearing to deal with the application number ZVA 24-25 SC, Jessica Kemp and Jake Francis. Monsieur Demont, will you please summarize the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and provide any additional information and correspondence relevant to the application?
Thank you. So this particular application, I believe the owner's present? This, okay, perfect. So the lands are located on the north side of Turco Road and are approximately 2 kilometers from the village of St. Charles. So the subject lands are surrounded by two residential rural uses to the west and predominantly rural uses to the northeast and south. Sub east plan were received an application for zoning bylaw amendment to permit a farm as an additional use to the existing residential rural zone. The site is approximately 4.49 hectares, which is equivalent to 11.09 acres. And in lot area, that's a lot area, so with approximately a lot frontage of 125 meters. It contains a single-family detached dwelling unit and a detached garage. As part of this process, municipal law enforcement department issued several letters to the owner of the property regarding the use of the land and the permissions under the residential rural zone, specifically under the municipality zoning bylaw is 7.6.1 of bylaw 2014-26. I just provided the, in terms of context, I provided the definition of farm. I've also provided definition of livestock, so just kind of touch on that briefly. So farm shall mean land and building used for the tillage of soil and growing vegetables, fruits, grains, and other staple crops, including livestock raising, dairy, or woodlots. A farm residence, it may include a roadside stand for selling agricultural products raised or grown on the farm. So it does touch on livestock in the farm definition. So there's also a definition for livestock, so it kind of feeds off that. So livestock means farm animals kept for use or for intended profit or gain, or without limiting the generality of the foregone includes dairy and beef cattle, horses, swine, sheep, laying hens, chicken, and turkey, turkey, goats, skis, mare, as in that. So it gives you what's farm, farm permits, livestock. Okay, livestock means these under the bylaw, that's the intent of that. So now jumping into, you know, jumping into the official plan. Again, the official plan kind of directs what's the primary use for these lands in the area. So lands that the property itself is designated rural policy area. So predominantly, if you look at, we're not talking zoning, there's no zoning yet. I'm just focusing on, above the zoning, the high-level document, the official plan, was the designation of these lands or lands in the area, and they're rural. So what does that mean? So the rural policy area says, high level says, it's used primarily for agriculture, farm-related, and secondary uses, as well as resource-based activities such as forestry, mining, so. But right off the bat, primarily used for agriculture, farm-related, and secondary. So when I'm looking at professionally providing recognition to council, I'm looking at conformity of the official plan. So from there, you lead to further policies that talk to the application. So the policies of planner intended to affirm that conservative natural amenities in sub east planning area and providing for agriculture and resource-based employment are important to the planning area. Agricultural activities are encouraged within the planning area. Again, these are just policies that are under this rural policy umbrella that really stand out right at the beginning. Now, the addition of a farm as a permitted use within the existing residential rural zone aligns with the intent of the sub east planning board's official plan. The official plan emphasizes that rural lands support agriculture and farm-related activities, and this aligns with the characteristics of the subject property. Now, the subject property, as I noted earlier, is 11.09 acres in size, or 1.49 hectares. And it was, this property was created before the sub east planning board. Like I have to give you all the context here because you might ask yourself, well, why is this, you know, why is this property shy of five hectares? Which it is. And I had to do some history and look at this. So this lot was created prior to there being regulations and policy. So that answers the question of me trying to understand why, why not create a lot that's five hectares? And we're not in this situation of rezoning. So that's the context, it was created before, don't understand why, but it is what it is. It's 11.09 acres in size. So, and the board was established in 1990, to give you a little bit of context. So sub east planning board created in 1990. And the official plan for the rural area stipulates a minimum lot. So basically, the official plan, rural policy area stipulates a minimum lot size of five hectares, which is 12.35 acres. So we're looking at a difference of 1.26 acres. The whole case I'm making in terms of just looking at lot area, it's a very insignificant difference. But it is, it's solely residential rural, but it has 11.09, which is a difference of 1.26 acres if it was rural. So. So that's, kind of touched on the five, there's a difference of 0.5 hectares between residential rural, which it is now to rural, and rural allows farming-related activity. That's the whole point of this kind of message in terms of policy context here. However, given the lot size, it is reasonable to allow farming-related activities such as keeping livestock, including a few cows and chickens, as it would be consistent with the rural nature of the area. So that's my professional opinion based on the policies of the official plan tying into the application. Additionally, subject property exceeds, so then I make another justification, just making rationale like for the recommendation. So additionally, subject property exceeds the rural zone minimum lot frontage requirement. What I mean by that is, you know, if you have a zone that's rural, you need a minimum 100 meters. The property the way it is today has 125 meters of frontage. So it exceeds if it was, even though it's residential rural zone and only requires a minimum of 16 meters. So today, it's 125 meters of frontage. Then I looked at the neighboring properties too, as part of this due diligence, and I did conduct a site visit as well. No, the neighboring properties, except for 540 Turco Road, are all rural properties that are also permitting farm-related activities. So if you drive down, we've all driven down Turco Road, and predominantly, there's, you know, if you look at 709 Turco Road, there's horses right in front, it's fenced in a small group with a house. Even if you look at 109, like just getting on the road, again, there's, it's fenced, small house. Even though it's large property, it's all fenced, and you do have horses right in front, and you have single-family homes right across the street. So characteristically, I'm looking at the whole street, and those are the facts to the situation. So then I kind of tie that back into the why we're here this evening in terms of land use, I'm focusing on land use specifically. So characteristically, you see that where there's one or two single-family homes, and then you have a farm across the street, it's fenced in the front yard, and they have predominantly horses on Turco Road. So with that said, in conclusion, based on all the facts that are together with the policy, based on the lot size, the lot area, and the characteristics of the surrounding properties, allowing a farm as permitted use within the residential rural zone is consistent with the policies of the official plan and generally conforms with the intent of policies of the official plan. So that's the official plan. Jumping into the zoning, so the property zone residential rural. The proposed zoning, and why we're here this evening is to have a special residential rural zone, which would be 30. So the zone has always been residential rural, it's been a land like that where it predates the planning board. So one can ask, well, why not change the residential rural to rural zone? Or there's two options, you can have residential rural zone the way it is and add additional use to the farm. And the reason for my justification is because it's only shy 1.26 acres, it's 11 acres. And then the other option is saying, well, why didn't you just rezon it to rural? Well, if you go into rural, it doesn't meet the 12 acres. So I'm using what's existing, which has more weight legally than trying to take the other avenue. Process of elimination, I'm trying to make a... Uh, process of elimination, I'm trying to make a, a professionally inclined decision or recommendation to council on that. So that's the, the thinking behind option A, option B there. So leave it as is, because it's legal binding in terms of that. And then the issue is the livestock, so adding a use which is permitted under rural, add that use to the residential because of those two, those requirements. So that's, that was the intent of that. Uh, the special provision thirty would permit additional use being farm, which allows livestock on the property. And the reason for that is, is for what I said earlier. Now, uh, in terms of, um, in terms of next steps, um, the, it's, wait, give me a second there. I did receive two phone calls, uh, from neighboring properties in, in the area. And, uh, so as, they did receive the notice of public hearing and just had conversations about, um, what, what the notice meant, the information on it, uh, touching on zoning bylaws, official plans, just the whole scope of why we're here tonight. So I did have two, uh, two conversations with the neighboring properties in the area. And, uh, uh, there is, we did receive a comment from bylaw services and not support of it. Uh, as part of the process against circulating it, uh, we do have bylaw here this evening as well. Um, and other than that, I haven't received any other phone calls, and then circulating the staff as everything's been satisfactory. So, um, with that said, um, I provide a recommendation of support, uh, to, to council this evening, uh, as it is consistent with the provincial policy. Statement two thousand and twenty-four conforms with the official plan for the Suburban Planning Board and conforms with the zoning bylaw. It meets the intent of the zoning bylaw two thousand and fourteen dash twenty-six for the municipal Saint Charles, and therefore can be supported from a planning perspective.
Thank you very much, Monsieur DuMont. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? If so, please stand, give your name and full mailing address to the clerk, uh, followed with any comments. Any comments from the public?
Uh, just, uh, my name is Kristen Buffard-Fortaine. I'm at four 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 Turcot Road in Saint Charles, OM two W two zero. Um, Bonsoir, uh, good evening, Mayor Brackeney, council members, staff, and all the interested parties that are here this evening. Um, again, my name is Kristen Buffard-Fortaine, my husband Guy Fortaine and I are the owners of the adjacent, of one of the adjacent properties. We reside at four 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 Turcot since the summer of two thousand and nineteen, when we built our forever home on our dream property that we purchased a couple of years earlier. Our twelve point five acre property, um, also, uh, rural residential, even though it does meet the full rural, um, requirements. Uh, our property abuts upon acreage owned by these parents, Lucien and Joan Fortaine, uh, on one side and in the back of us, and also ties into hundreds of acres of land that has been in the Fortaine family for generations. We were happy, enjoying our peaceful life up until the next year, when the neighboring property was sold and the new owners settled in. The unrealistic wishes of the, the southerners to run a small farm off a fraction of the land required to do so quickly started infringing on our own rights to enjoy our own home. It's important to note that we're not opposed to farming activities in general. In fact, my maternal family are multi-generational farmers, uh, to this day in Noelville. And Guy's family has also, uh, has farm blood running through, uh, their veins. Uh, tonight, uh, we are here to voice our opposition to the application submitted by our neighbors Jake Francis and Jessica Kemp. Based on the grounds of proximity to our house and layout of the two properties, the unacceptable noise levels from their livestock dogs barking, the infestation of rodents and feline, the pungent odors from manure and rotting food from the loop program, the very high probability of contamination and severe health problems to us and our family resulting from seeping of cattle feces and runoff into the water table and our wellhead, the lack of respect for property boundaries and survey markings, the continued practice of doing as they wish without thinking about consequences to others, and not following bylaws such as open burning, unregistered animals, unresponsible pet ownership, not paying neutering animals, having cats and dogs roaming at large, destroying the properties of others, including ours, and even undertaking home renovations, uh, without proper building permits. The list of infractions and total lack of respect for laws, um, and other can continue, but I'm sure everyone wants to go home tonight, so I'll spare you all the details. Even the appearance of the neighboring property is so frustrating for us, um, as we take great pride into the upkeep and maintenance of our property, and just a thrown, a stone throw away, it looks like a junkyard. Since our properties are so close and there's nothing to delimit where one starts and one ends, um, some people have asked us, what is all the garbage on the side of our house? Uh, cause it's an eyesore. The lack of pride of ownership from the neighbors diminish the beauty of the surrounding area and will likely decrease the value of our own property and others in the area for years to come. All of these named reasons have had a direct impact on us as neighbors and has greatly diminished our enjoyment of our home and reduced our quality of life. We have suffered physically, financially, and mentally from our neighbors running a makeshift farm so close to us for the past four years. It's become unbearable. The site plan for our property and the applicants clearly illustrates the proximity of the pastures to our dwelling. Our measurements are the following. The pastures was set up fifty point four feet from our house, six feet from our small sheds, ten point two feet from our biggest storage shed, and seventy-seven point six feet from our well. These distances, uh, would all, sorry, are all way below the regulated distances of a resident for farming activities for rural zoning as it, as it, as a means to protect the neighboring properties from any negative effects such as groundwater contamination and so on. These measurements should have been considered and subject to the MDS formula, which is the minimum distance sep- separation for agricultural activities when there's a building permit application for a farm, for a barn, so on and so forth, or a review of a proximity, or the review of proximity, sorry, is an issue such as the rezoning application. The application to rezone with a special provision to add use of land to a farm is an unfair loophole being used by the property owners to go about doing agricultural activities without the minimum lot size required of five acres, uh, sorry, of five hectares, which is twelve point three five acres, um, of the rural zoning, that are designated to meet the needs of all the farming activities. The approval of this variance by means of an amendment to the existing bylaw for this property owner will create a dan- dangerous precedent for others that own a little piece of land to run farms without having to follow other regulations for farming and any consultation with provincial agricultural legislative bodies such as OMAFRA, Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, the Agricultural Operation Practices Act, and so on. I have contacted some of these agencies and have brought forth my concerns in my, um, my seat tonight. There even exists minimum space requirements per animal for livestock keeping, and any research and calculation clearly illustrates that the property of four six six Turcot is not big enough to even allow the animals that currently have a lot of weight right now. We want to stress that one of the biggest issues continues to be with the two livestock guardian dogs. They can bark all night long without being, there, without there being any repercussions or respect for noise bylaws, as these dogs are excluded from these rules.
Can I, can, excuse me, uh, for interrupting?
Wait.
There, there normally, there's a limit on time, uh, permitted?
Okay.
So, uh, is there much more?
Nope.
In your presentation?
Almost done.
Nope, almost done. Uh, okay, where was I here? Yeah, we're unable to get to sleep and are awakened all hours of the night due to the loud barking close to our bedrooms. We have sound machines fans that run all night, all night long to drown out the noise, and we're still hearing them bark. This has caused us to miss work, um, being too tired to perform our duties, uh, have affect on our health. Uh, even to this day, we're unable to go even outside during the day without the dogs barking at us. We've had these vicious dogs growl at us when we go to our gardens or our sheds. This is not acceptable. If farming was not allowed on the property, there would be no animals to guard, and there would be no need for these type of dogs to be there, and consequently, no barking would be a problem on this property. The lack of privacy is also related, as we are not able to have a sunup, whatever, enjoy our shower outside, so on and so forth. Uh, we feel that we have lost our rights to peacefully enjoy our home. Uh, these nuisances are infringing, infringing on our enjoyment, and it's not fair that their desire to farm supersedes our rights and try creating us anguish. Um, hold on, I'll just skip a few things here to, for the time. Okay, the planning and zoning process must also take into account the impact of the neighbors, uh, which I know is part of the process, but these considerations should be assessed, to be built in, uh, the requirement for complete zoning application. In our opinion, due diligence was not fully executed with the application to fully assess the risks involved and measures imposed to mitigate the numerous problematic issues with farm use, uh, for the reasons we mentioned tonight. For the, yeah, I guess, for all these reasons, we look to council to reject the application. That is not in the best interest of not only us as neighbors, uh, but as you will see, um, a little later, uh, also not in the best interest of the other neighboring properties. Thank you very much, Monsieur, for your consideration, um, for the grounds for the opposing of this bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any more comments from the public? I, I know there is one here that was, uh, given to us in a pre-pick form. Would you read it? Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, so this is, uh, submitted by Betty Lang, she, for, unit four, five forty Turcot Road. Re- rezoning, not enough land suitable for grazing animals, property is very rocky and not much grass available. In fact, owner has trespassed on my own property, cut trees and brush, and actually installed an electric fence approximately twenty feet onto my property in order to try and gain more space for his animals. The balance of the designated pastures in the plan are also marginal, and I don't believe livestock or cultivation would be sustainable. Also, his electric wire must be removed and the surveys, uh, boundary respected. I've spoken to Jessica about this and have offered to pay my share of the defense. To date, the matter has not been resolved, therefore I would not be in favor of rezoning.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
You said it all pretty well.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from council to the applicant or anybody that has made a presentation? Counselor, watch this.
I'm just wondering if we could hear from the bylaw officer? Or is that weird?
Fence.
Um, would, like?
You, would you have a, a comment?
I'm just wondering if you would have a comment?
So, just due to the fact that there are, it, there is an open investigation on this, anything from bylaw would have to go into closed session.
Okay.
And we?
If you would like to go into a closed session, we can, but, um, you cannot openly comment.
No, that's not, that's not. No, um.
But if?
No, thank you, but, no, I've heard, I've heard her s- her.
Okay.
Her, um, speech and, uh, there's, there's a lot to consider.
Alright. Uh, Counselor Potte? So, previous, the previous owners obviously weren't using this for, uh, well, for farm use. Um, I'm just wondering, so this property, uh, abat, you know, it mentioned it was combined due to, uh, land ownership?
No.
Like, what's that?
Who are you questioning?
Well, um, Monsieur DuMont, uh, there was, like, different properties were because of the title?
Through your chair, yes. Give me a second, I'll support the report.
I know that was touched on a little bit here, and that's just what I'm trying to.
Behind four four four, around and behind is on like, it's backwards. Right, that's, that's not, doesn't.
Yeah, question, question.
So, so there's, uh, an application for two thousand and ten, and that was B fifty-eight, two thousand and ten, Saint Charles, so it's to separate approximately, at the time, the, the balance of it because of ownership issues, uh, was about approximately thirty-five hectares of land from the subject lands, and they were gonna add those lands to another parcel of land that was abutting it. That was the intent to transfer that over. Uh, and the purpose of the application was to revise the article limit of the existing lot of, of record. When I say lot of record, it's like original parcel land, so that was the intent for two thousand and ten. Um, and then, um, Lee's part was in my office in two thousand and seventeen, um, because it was dealing with, uh, this property, uh, and that property abutment, which is just, so this property, like I said, is eleven point zero nine acres, that one beside it is just over twelve acres. And so at the time, uh, went to the planning board, the reason why I went to the planning board was to separate the two laws, because Lee's owned both properties.
Okay.
And they merged on title, or they inadvertently merged on title due to the pattern of ownership. So part of that process was, again, um, no change in zoning, because it's very technical from a owner and legal perspective, that, um, and it was technically, it was created before, and it was legally that way. So, again, just providing my Russian, national justification of leaving it the status quo from a land use perspective, leaving it the way it is. This is just technical in nature to re, um, how would I say it? Uh, it was two lots before, but to legally make it back to two lots again. So that was the purpose and intent in two thousand and seventeen, uh, which was finalized, which is why we have two separate, you know, four six six, and then that one beside it is separate to this day because of that process in two thousand and seventeen.
Uh, perfect, no, thank you, um, just to understand, uh, what, what was, uh, meant in there. So, just to respect that, and then there's, so the subject property or the, the plan, how, like, that, that takes a very small portion of that overall property, right? The, so from, if I'm looking at the site plan, from the pasture back, it's only maybe, like, a third of the property possibly?
Through your chair, just, uh, to your comment, uh, just so I can understand correctly, so you're looking at like the balance of the lands basically for that property four six six?
Yeah, like the site plan, uh, shows like where the pastures are approximately and stuff like that. I was trying to, so, i- in reality, this, uh, yeah, that one right there, yeah. So, the, the remainder of the lot is unusable, uh, in its current form, because it's all like, uh, tr- trees and everything, right? So?
For now, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I'm just looking at, at, from that perspective, it's unusable land at the moment, so you're?
I could, I'll just say like, I understand the perspective through your chair, like, I could understand the perspective of, it's, it's, uh, it's tree. Uh, it's still usable, it depends to the extent of, like, as a property owner, if they want maybe safer, then clear more of the land to the rear yard, and then, I said, another, like, option, I guess, availability to the situation.
Thank you. Uh, no further questions?
Counselor Duskin?
Kind of a little area, yes, um, couple of quick questions as far as the setbacks on rural for construction of, uh, of utility buildings, and so like a, a barn or whatnot. Setback from the prop, maybe you don't know this, I'll probably be at CBO more, but you might be familiar, the setback, is it not a hundred feet from the property line abutting next door?
Um, so when we think about, like, when you talk setbacks, uh, from a zo- from a zoning bylaw perspective, because there's different types of setbacks for different things, um- because there's different types of setbacks for different things, um, we always look at, there's two types of structures. There's the, uh, we always refer to the single-family home. It has its own setbacks and what I mean, what you mean by that is like the side yard, side yard, front yard and the rear yard. So if you have a structure, you have, to your point, the certain distance. So you always have setbacks for the main structure and then you have also setbacks for accessory structures. And accessory structures are typically your garages that are detached, uh, barns in the, in the area. So, those accessory structures typically, um, can be located closer to the lot line. Uh, and generally speaking, uh, you know, anywhere between, um, you know, from a main dwelling to an accessory structure, it can, it can go from like one point five meters to ten meters in, in that range. Meaning, um, you can build as close as, you know, say, uh, four point nine two feet up to ten meters is equivalent to thirty feet. So depending the type of structure you're looking at, when you go see Andrea Building Services for a building permit, she's just double checking what type of structure it is and then she's looking at how close legally you can build. Uh, hopefully that answers the question.
I, I thought that, uh, for rural properties was different than for residential, or what, like, when I went through and I built myself personally, I was told fifty might have just been so that I didn't have to go and get the property severed possibly. Maybe it was just avoid that, make sure I was at least fifty, seventy-five feet away from the, the border of the property line, but maybe that's what it was.
Give me a second, I'll pull it up, I'll pull it up, I have, uh, I have access to it, I have it already up, I have it just in case. Um, okay, so for residential rural, current zone. Uh, for, I'll just, uh, accessory building?
Yes.
Okay, so for an accessory?
Or an accessory building, a shed.
So, yeah, so for an accessory building, minimum interior side yard is three meters. So, three meters is, uh, give me a second.
Ten feet, just a second.
I'm not gonna calculate it, but, okay, ten feet is, so, but, uh, that's for the accessory building. And then for the main dwelling unit is ten, uh, sorry, for the, uh, for the house, it is six meters. So it's greater, for the house, it's greater, yeah.
And that's for residential rural, and then there's why there's rural, so.
Yeah.
I was just.
Do you want to pull up rural?
The way the property's divided, like, that awkward shape, and I, and I know I sit on the planning board and you, like, we all like straight lines. This is why when people look at, we want straight lines. We want straight lines. Um, what, what's the, what is the road frontage of four forty-four Turcot Road, I'm just curious? How many meters?
Hundred twenty-five meters.
No.
We're sorry, is that first, which, uh, did I misunderstand?
Four, 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 the, the one abutting, so like, it's more than a hundred twenty-five meters, huh?
Sorry, I don't have that.
Just a question to you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, oh, it's, uh, yeah, I'm just, wait, I can kind of see it on Google Maps, it's in where the, with the land, where, where that division is, where that line goes.
Yeah, through you, Chair, like, it's, uh, you know, I, I kind of stumped on that one as to, you know, back in time or why does somebody, uh, sub- create a lot irregularly shaped the way it is? I don't have, we'll never know the answer to that, but dealing with it tonight.
I have. We know.
Can I say the answer?
Uh, yes, give me, the reason of the irregular shaped lot, yeah, just that, yes?
Because when I bought the property, Mr. Barr had an apple tree and he wanted to keep the apple tree on his side.
That's what it is, maybe.
I won't forget that one.
Thank you very much. Uh, you had it.
Yeah, I'm just, so the, the interior side yard, exterior side yard measurements, that's what I'm, I'm kind of looking at. What's the difference in, like, what, what is that, interior side yard and the exterior side yard?
Okay, so, so the difference is, most of the time, you're always gonna deal with interior. Uh, interior means two properties that are together. Like, so it's like I own a property, you're my neighbor.
Yeah.
The line between us is interior.
Okay.
Okay, exterior is saying, uh, you own a property at the corner of King Street here, you're in a corner lot and, uh, so you have a neighbor on one side, which would be your interior, but the road allowance? You know, King Street being road would be exterior because you don't have the actual neighbor, you have the road. Or Crown Lane, that would be the exterior, that example.
That makes sense, thank you.
Anything else? Any other, uh, questions from council? Uh, the only item that I just want to make sure that everybody understood, um, that if we have specific questions we want to ask to the bylaw officer, we would have to, somebody would have to request close and then we would go and close and we could question at that time. But because there is an ongoing investigation, we cannot, so it's up to council. All right, so therefore, if there are any, no more questions? Um, I declare this public hearing to be concluded. Uh, and we will now be moving into, uh, the motions themselves. The bylaws. So therefore, can I have a mover and a seconder for the first and second reading of the bylaws? Counselor Pottie, Counselor Loftus?
Moved by Counselor Pottie and seconded by Counselor Loftus. Be it resolved, the Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives first and second reading to the following bylaws. Bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero one being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty-six, twenty fourteen dash twenty-six as amended, bracket Ryan McBain. Next, bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero two being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty fourteen dash twenty-six as amended, bracket Ryan McBain. And next, bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero three being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty fourteen dash twenty-six as amended, bracket Jake Francis and Jessica Campy.
All those in favor? Carry. Uh, now can I have a mover and a seconder for the third and final reading of the, uh, first, uh, lot owned by Ryan McBain? Counselor Pottie and Counselor DaChance?
Moved by Counselor Pottie and seconded by Counselor DaChance. Be it resolved, the Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives third reading to, and finally passes bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
All those in favor? Carry. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the second McBain property? Counselor DaChance and Counselor Loftus?
Moved by Counselor DaChance and seconded by Counselor Loftus. Be it resolved, the Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives third reading to, and finally passes bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
All those in favor? Carry. Um, now can I have the, we're moving on to the, uh, third bylaw, which is for Jake, Francis and Jessica, yeah? Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Loftus and Counselor Pottie?
Moved by Counselor Loftus and seconded by Counselor Pottie. Be it resolved, the Council for the Corporation of the Municipality of Saint Charles hereby gives third reading to, and finally passes bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
All those in favor? Questions?
Just, um, go back to discussion of this for two seconds here.
We're not allowed to discuss?
Yeah, we're supposed to discuss, right?
Okay, sorry, you're correct. You're correct. Anyone ahead of me has something to say?
Oh, do I have first?
No.
Okay. Um, so, uh, understanding the concerns that were brought forward, those are all, in my opinion, those are all bylaw concerns. They're not, it's not about the zoning, in my opinion. Um, so, if whichever way it goes, uh, bylaws still have their job to do with, uh, with everything that could come out of, uh, livestock, with animals, uh, but as far as land use, I, I don't think that, that this is an absurd zoning law amendment.
Okay.
Just personally, the way I'm seeing it.
Yeah, so we're, in other words, we're, regardless if it's passed or not, it's not gonna have an impact?
Yeah, so that, like, uh, the zoning, the zoning is a zoning, uh, it gives you the rights, but at the same time, if, if you're, if the, you have that animal control or bylaw after you instill, you know, it's not power there to remove, uh, animals from properties and, and so on and so forth. So it's, land use perspective wise, as, uh, Mr. Duma explained, it is, it is shy, slightly shy of the sizing for it, but, uh, for your livestock too, there is a cultivation, so that can also be used in having livestock removed from the usable area. Like, so there's, just for me, I don't, I think this lot is way closer to being a rural lot than it is to being a rural residential lot, just as the previous lots are closer to being an R one than they are to a rural, so, um, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Any other? Yes?
Um, my only comment about it, yes, they are, uh, you're correct in that, uh, it is closer to being a re- uh, residential or rural than it is a residential rural, just as, uh, the other applications tonight. Um, I think part of the issue here is, uh, I'd say it is a bylaw issue, not technically a zoning bylaw issue, but, uh, I think if there is actively, uh, issues ongoing with, uh, some of the zoning bylaws infringing on that, I think that's something that, uh, that must be taken into consideration with this, right? So, that's just so- something to keep in mind, I think.
Okay, anything else, uh, from, uh, council?
No, I just believe it's, it's, we're talking land use and zoning and, um, like, I mean, we've talked to the planning board, the planning board has explained to us about this property and I would tend to go with the planning board because it's a planning board issue, it's, so.
Sorry, I had just, uh, another, another quick question as far as we still have, we still have to get permits for utility buildings, you know, if it's on a farm, um, so, that'll last a little bit of the CBO regardless. Just trying to think of site plan wise, like, I know we don't, it's not typically something that's required, a site plan for if you're building a shed or barn on your property, just, uh, I don't know, if it, if it'd be going through, maybe would be instead of giving it, changing it to a rural, would be more of a rural residential with just a special permission for strictly the farming, not the logging, not the mining. You know, maybe don't give it all the rights of a rural, is that, uh, can't remember, I had it written here, Mr. Duma? Was it just RR, remain RR with special condition or was it going to the bylaw to rural?
It, uh, through you, Chair, um, it's, uh, I, I think, like, I understand this s- situation here or, and that they're valid points, everybody's bringing to attention, I do support, and this is kind of conversations I've had internally with some of the rate bearers too, just understanding the circumstance for why we're here tonight. Uh, and I don't want that to kind of get confusing or, or, again, I'm just providing you the information, ultimately, you are the approval authority. Um, and, and in terms of, uh, in terms of process or next steps, like, whatever outcome, there's two outcomes, uh, from a land use perspective. One outcome, just to explain process here, is, um, should, uh, should the, um, should the council, uh, support the recommendation of staff, uh, which has been brought forth and it pr- it moves forward and then there's other avenues with, uh, to your point, uh, about site plan and Andrea having the ability and control to deal with that, with that information as well as, uh, Kevin with bylaw, so you have two, the other departments also part of this process. Um, the other, the other process here is, should council, uh, should council, uh, disagree, uh, with the recommendation of staff, which is okay as well, um, then that, uh, then the owner of the property has the ability to appeal. Um, and it's, it's their, their right as well, just kind of sharing perspective here, uh, they have the EFP, uh, so they have the right to appeal within twenty days of the decision or notice of passage for this process, uh, to make, that, what does that mean? You pay a, uh, you, you pay a fee and you provide a, it's online onto Ontario Tribunal. So the Ontario Tribunal has an application, you pay a fee and you give that to, uh, Tammy. And Tammy will communicate with me and then I have to put a, a package together within a certain timeframe and provide that and then that will go to the courts. Uh, so that's the other option too, uh, on this, uh, in terms of option one, option two could be potentially appealed, uh, depending the outcome of, uh, councils, uh, councils. Now, uh, the Planning Act, also like, just to kind of just refresh people's, there's a lot of changes going on with, uh, with the provincial government. Um, and they have eliminated, uh, the provincial government last year eliminated the right to appeal from third-party appeals. So neighboring properties can no longer appeal. So really, this is just between council and the owner of the property as, in terms of appeals now. Before, neighbors had the right to appeal, that's been eliminated as of last year, two thousand and twenty-eight. So, just kind of giving you all the three kind of options to this, but if I circle back at the end date, um, I can't, I wasn't able to get caught up with everything, I just get the information that I have and I just focus on land use perspective and, and that's one thing out of many other things and that's what I did for the privacy.
Thank you very much. Any more questions from council?
I just have the one, so as far as, like, you know, discussing, uh, uh, some of the issues at hand being a bylaw perspective issue, uh, as far as zoning bylaw goes, uh, does it also fall under bylaw? Because you're not going around enforcing zoning bylaw, right? It would fall under third section also to enforce that.
So, there's a little bit of overlap, let's through you, Chair.
Yes.
There's a little bit of overlap here, um, bylaw, so what's unique about bylaw, bylaw has, uh, I can't, you know, just based on my own knowledge of dealing with my own personal issue, bylaw has, uh, there's a lot of different bylaws in place. One of those bylaws is only bylaw which deals with land use under the Planning Act. Uh, so one of the letters that was received was with respect to, uh, the cow or cows, which, which is, which ties in to livestock, which ties into farm, which is why I would hear from a land use perspective. Now the dog, the d- dog, that's a separate by, that's a separate bylaw, so not to get, you know, you gotta understand where it means something and maybe where it doesn't mean something, so the idea of saying, you know, a dog is livestock, um, I'd be of the opinion, no. Uh, that's a, that's a separate matter, it's a separate bylaw. So there are different bylaws and we're just dealing with one of the bylaws that's, hopefully that kind of, uh, uh, answer helps, helps you out on understanding that. Because like you said, there's a lot of points about, you know, the layout, the livestock, you mentioned of the dogs, separate matter. Boundaries, boundaries are surveys, that's between two major property owners at the end of the day. Like, again, I'm just gonna read things out and trying to understand people's perspective and issues and that's civil, like, if, that's a civil matter. Uh, following bylaws, yes, we're here tonight for, for the land use, for farm permission, I totally understand, that makes a lot of sense, I support that. Uh, contamination of wells, uh, you know, that, that, that's a pretty serious, uh, you know, there needs to be evidence, there needs, there's other, uh, agencies in, 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 involved with that. So that's no more like local issue, that's a provincial issue too, so that's, so, but listening, again, listening to all the, to the factors like appearance, garbage, those are going back to your, your case, bylaw, different type of bylaw, uh, standards. Uh, you know, value of property, not really pertaining to what we're dealing with, with this evening. Uh, direct impact, uh, again, that's personal, like mentally, physically, that's personal. Again, I just have to focus, I appreciate all the feedback, I listen to it and with the role that I'm in, I just have to say if this was to be appealed to the courts, uh, has to have merit regarding to, uh, more of the livestock, the farm aspect, but I'm here tonight, that, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Are you good? Any more questions?
Yeah, just again, this is, the property still gonna be in R, R with special permission for the farm.
That's correct, uh, through you, Chair, that is correct, just to confirm that, uh, there's, there's, uh, only five uses under the residential rule. So I'm not, those uses are maintained with the additional use as a farm. That's it. Uh, no further additional uses, like, there's thirty uses under the rural umbrella, we're not taking, we're just taking one of those uses and adding it to this existing zone, that's it, that's the intent and purpose.
I have a question. In, in your document, you say, and I'll, I'll just read it off so I don't make a, a mistake. In, in your document, you say, and I'll, I'll just read it off so I don't make a mistake. It is reasonable to allow farm related activities such as keeping livestock, including a few cows and chicken. So a few, what's the, is there a number attached to a few?
That's, so through you, Chair, that's the information I've given, I summarized that based on the information that was given by the applicant, that's why I said a few, because I heard there's a couple. So that's why I said that was based on the current information, could have evidence today, dealing with the, the summary. I felt that is appropriate and reasonable. Um, obviously there's no limit on, on, like, again, if we, if we all garden our vehicles and when all went to do a site visit yesterday or tomorrow, for example. Um, there are horses, again, there's, some people have two horses, some people have right up on the soul. I'm, I'm understanding the nuisance and I'm trying to understand the perspective of the concerns with, with this and, and balancing those concerns with what's abutting and existing in the area. And, and that would, that would also be factored in into the courts. So like for, for me, I'm having a hard time, I'm like citing on the other perspective, let's say maybe not supporting it. Because of, of the neighboring properties and uses that are up on the front yard and that are fenced on the front yard and on the interior side yards with the dwelling unit. And horses provide other smells and odors and nuisances and those are not issues, but this is an issue, so I'm having a hard time understanding the balance of that. That's, that's what I struggled with, um, but they have the rights, they have the rights of farms and if you look on the south side. There are several properties that are, again, the fore planning board's perspective, there's five or six lots that are small, undersized residential rural lots that are point three of an acre, not even an acre. Uh, to the, if you look at the south to the west there, there's like, they're all small, small, small. Uh, again, those are legal lots of record, but they're all residential rural and there's some other lots, but predominantly outside of that, they're all rural. Uh, which is why when you do drive down, you do see that and most of the people you are using the front of their property. Even though these properties are forty, eighty, hundred, two hundred acre properties, if you drive down characters, they're gonna work. Most of, of, of the operation is for whatever reason is happening at the front end of the property. And probably the explanation goes back to Nazi saying about like the balance of the lands because they're all treeed and people don't have the, maybe the financial capabilities to go in there, remove all the trees. To have their farm stay in place, so trying to.
Say when it comes to building on a, on a vacant lawn, like usually you try to pick the spot that's nice and flat and easy to build on, right? In this case, it, the house was built closer, closer to the property line, but after the fact, like if there's no farm there in the first place, but land use wise, I don't know.
Okay, so any last questions, comments? No? So who, uh, all those in favor? So, two, I would therefore be the deciding vote. And if, I just want to make sure I explain the, the, the vision, it's, it's hard to, we have to separate ourselves from, um, what is a, a bylaw sin- uh, conflict or scenario where there's uh, items that aren't met in the bylaws, and not in the bylaw. In uh, yeah, by law enforcement and what is being asked of us today. What is being asked us, of us today is if one point two acres is sufficient or not to classify a lot as uh, rural, residential. With the, the special permit to allow farming and in my perspective, it is also permitted. So, Carrie. So having said this, I have one more statement to add here, um, regarding. Please be advised that any person or agency may appeal the bylaw. Uh, to the Ontario Land Tribunal by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk of the municipality of St. Charles, not later than February fourth, twenty twenty-five. The notice of appeal must set out the reason for the appeal and must be accompanied by a required fee, which is prescribed under the Ontario Land Tribunal Act of twenty seventeen. This fee should be made payable to the Minister of Finance. All comments will be treated as public record and given out upon request. Can I have a mover and a seconder to adjourn? Counselor Pottie, Counselor Loftus.
Moved by Counselor Pottie and seconded by Counselor Loftus. Be it resolved, the council for the corporation of the municipality of St. Charles hereby adjourns the special meeting of council at six forty-five PM on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All those in favor? Carrie. Meeting is adjourned.
I'll be in counsel.